Anybody else ready?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Yeah? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Health meeting. We are at the Old Town Hall, also known as the Old Grange Hall. Today's Thursday, March 10th. We are at 1111 Somerset Avenue. I want to remind everyone, this is also a remote participation Zoom meeting. It is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcasts and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. The Zoom meeting number is 846-88342224. The Zoom meeting passcode is 037-959. And the Zoom dial-in number is 1-929-2056099. We'll call the meeting into order, it's like 6:02, I believe. And if anyone would please stand and join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We had a little reorganization of our agenda this evening. Instead of waiting for everyone to do their respective reports at the end of the meeting, we've moved town nurse and animal inspector up. Should something come up, they would be able to leave without, you know, and their report would have been given. So first, we'll go with the town nurse. Nicole, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. So as we've been seeing, the COVID cases have continued to go down in the town. The way that they're trending, it looks like it's not really necessary to have anyone doing contact tracing anymore, especially the stance that the state has taken. It's kind of on the discretion of the town. I think that as a nation, we're kind of taking the whole test and treat, I think is what the president had mentioned on his State of the Union the other day. So we're kind of getting away from the having to contact every case. It really hasn't been as helpful as it was when it was started, when Roz and Todd were doing it and they were contacting people and then contacting people that they had been in contact with. We haven't done that in a long time, and that's really where the life-saving measures were. Now that we're just calling people and letting them know they have to isolate for five days, for the most part, people know this. The most that we could do as a town now is continue to, as new guidance comes out, make sure the population is aware, but the calling, the cases, I just don't see the value in that anymore.
Do you see a time when the state's just going to say?
I don't know if they'll ever come out and say, just stop doing it, because they don't want to have that responsibility. But it is starting to go kind of towards what we do with the flu. It's not even in the workflow that we work out of, it's not even in our media anymore. It's kind of like, so eventually, yeah, I think it's going to be kind of, we just check the box and say, yeah. And that is something we can do now, if we choose to do that. I don't think, I think monitoring it and seeing to make sure, looking at the age, maybe looking at how many cases within the home and feeling if we need to reach out or not. And for the most part, if people feel like they need to reach out to someone, they need to reach out to their providers, not to us, especially when now there's certain treatments that they're using.
Well, it does seem it is going down. I guess that's a blessing, you know, in a way, you know, it's, we've managed to get it under control, hopefully, so with the vaccinations and whatnot, so, okay. Well, thank you. Animal inspector, Mrs.?
The only thing I have to talk about is the avian flu that's coming through. They have found it in Massachusetts. It is not zoonotic, which means we can't catch it, but it is species-specific in the fact that it will do chickens, turkeys, migratory birds, geese, that kind of stuff. What we're saying, what I'm asking is if anybody has sick chickens, to please either call me or the Department of Ag, so somebody can go out and test to see if that's what's going on. And especially if you wake up one morning and your whole flock is dead, definitely give us a call, because then we have to shut down within a 10-mile radius of anything that's going on for poultry and that kind of stuff. That means eggs, it means, it can even shut down a dairy barn if people are walking on a place that has chickens and they can track it to the dairy barn. They even shut, they've even shut down dairy barns. So we need to know, it's kind of, I mean, I could shut down, depending on where it is, I could have Berkeley, I could have Somerset and Swansea, I could have Rehoboth in that 10-mile radius, so.
Would you just quickly explain, I mean, you talked about chickens and other birds and whatnot, just explain what avian flu is, sort of, quickly?
I can try, quickly. Where is it?
I wonder if it's cold.
Well, basically, basically, it's highly contagious. It's usually, it's, has been found and it was found in the beginning in migratory birds. And they had cases in New Hampshire, we now have cases in Massachusetts, they have found cases in Massachusetts. And it attacks their respiratory system, and usually, you don't know they have it until they're dead. It's not one of those things that you go out and go, oh, my chicken looks a little sick today, I need to do something. It's usually how we find it is the animal has come, the chicken or the turkey or whatever has come up dead. And they do test for it, the state, if you're concerned, the state will come out and test all your chickens for free. You just need to call the Department of Ag and they'll send out somebody to do that, so you don't have to worry about it.
I have a crazy question.
Just, just birds.
Okay, so it's not, you can go to other animals?
I know it can be transmitted to humans, but that's extremely rare.
This one is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could it, and we have two Ag people here, so, can it be like a chicken, have an egg and be in the egg and transmitted to you?
We have not found it that way.
Okay.
And as I said, it's very species-specific. It doesn't mean that somebody somewhere can't get it out of the normal, but it's very species-specific. It attacks fowl and poultry and that kind of stuff.
If they were to find it in a flock, do they dispose of the flock?
Yes, they do. They'll shut down, they've, when this first came out, there was a turkey processing place in the Midwest somewhere that had young, young ones, you know, had stages of chickens. They went through all their barns and euthanized all of them.
And then they disinfect?
Yep, and then they have to disinfect.
Do you know how long before they can start another flock there, or?
I don't know how long it is, but I know there is a waiting period. And you have to go in, you have to, and it also can live in the soil because of feces, because that's how you transport it to different farms, so you have to really clean out your whole facility, so.
Wow. Well, let's hope we don't get it around here.
Questions, Scott? Okay.
Oh, before we move on, can I just circle back to the contact tracing? Because we still do have Diane that I'm sending cases to. I didn't know if we had a timeframe for her, or I can't remember when we hired her, if we said till such-and-such a date.
I thought it was until you were able to keep.
Okay, and I am, so I just want to make that aware, that I'm able to keep up. And also, as I said, I don't think we need to be calling people, but that's not a decision. I just want to say, hey, I don't think we need to, it's really like a town decision, if we're all comfortable with that, going on the approach that we're going to educate people to get tested, where to get tested, and treatments that are available, and not so much contacting.
Yeah, we can run that by the Board of Selectmen and see if they want to end the appointment right now temporarily.
Okay.
In case should COVID.
Yeah, we have another spike or something.
Spike, and we could bring it up, you know. Matter of fact, we have Salkman Hall with us this evening, and I'm sure he'll bring that to a meeting for us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a meeting with Mike tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
I believe there was end date.
Yeah, it was, I believe it was a three-month maximum, I believe. But I looked at last week, hours, and she only had like two hours, you know, so it's almost not worth keeping her on board, you know, because Nicole can handle it now, so, all right?
That's also something that
Thank you.
Board of Health can make that decision.
Yeah, but we'd probably have to post it, I mean, put it on the agenda, no?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just stopping her, she was a per diem employee anyway, I don't, I don't think it needs like a vote or anything necessarily.
I would just like to see how long, what was it, three months, we'll just check. I can look into it, yeah.
Moving on to
Oh, wait, I just saw one comment. Should we be calling all the barn permits in town and letting them know about the aviary?
They should already know.
Okay. That's all.
Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, moving on to committee business, number 4A. If we could just bypass that, our town administrator, Mike Mullin, is supposed to be with us to talk about this. It's the State Public Health Excellence Grant that I guess we're eligible for, and so we'll be discussing that further on down the agenda. 4B is to review, discuss, and act health agent job description and duties. The only reason that this got put on there was as a result of a meeting approximately, maybe a week and a half ago or two, where there was discussion regarding job description with town administrator and one of the selectmen and a couple of the board members, I wasn't present. And one of the things that came up was the amount of time that our health agent would devote to stormwater duties. And it was mentioned, right now, the job description as it stands, when it was added to, was supposed to be three hours of stormwater duties. That is not possible, three hours of stormwater duties for what's going on today. And more like eight to 10, am I guessing, pretty much on a
If you average out a month, yeah.
So it's more like eight to 10 hours. Some of the conversation involved, stormwater duties are up to 50% of the health agent's normal work week if needed. Well, I don't know how anybody feels about that, we talked about this last night. If you recall, both, all three of us were there last evening in discussion with the Board of Selectmen. Is it needed? It probably is, but it's not going to come from our health agent. Our health agent cannot do 17 and a half hours and get the job done. I don't care what week it is. So the vote I was going to take last night was regarding the job description and stormwater duties. As it stands right now, there's probably too many stormwater duties in eight to 10 hours. But the motion I would like to get this evening is that there is, we remain as we are and do not even consider 50% of the time being spent on stormwater duties. If you guys want to speak to that, go ahead. Mrs. Goulart, last night, made some great valid points, and I was involved with the first stormwater committee set up in preparation of the stormwater, she did most of the work, but I was involved. And everything she said was spot-on 100%. I think, and I'm going to go to you again, because I think you had the perfect answer.
Can I just add, oh, I'm not sure what was said yesterday in executive session should be reset here.
That's a good actual
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not even sure we should be doing this.
All right, so I won't speak to that anymore.
In case somebody says
Thank you.
paid them or something, or something will serve.
Thanks, Kevin. So you will
I think focusing on the Board of Health position is
So I'd like to vote on, if you guys want to speak to it, that's fine, the number of hours. The discussion on the 50% was not an executive session, am I correct?
It was all executive session.
The whole thing was executive session.
Not last night. The previous discussion, when that was first brought up, that was just an open meeting, am I correct?
Last night?
Not last night.
I think last night was the first time it was ever brought up.
The 50/50.
I thought that was brought up at a
It was, it was brought up at meeting we had with Mike Mullin.
Okay.
That was the first time it was brought up.
So it was previously Yeah, so it was previously brought up at a meeting, as I thought it was. So at this point, if nobody wants to add anything, I would ask for a motion to not agree to our health agent performing stormwater duties 50% of the time, or 25% of the time, or simply as we're doing now. He is the stormwater agent that's in the job. But as far as a specific time, number of hours, I don't think we should go with that. Todd, you want to speak to this for yourself, or?
Well, thank you. Yeah, that's why we added more hours to the job, we moved from 28 to 35, because I need the hours to get the Board of Health work done. Stormwater is increasing, but yeah, I can't do the Board of Health job in 17 hours, so.
Laura?
I totally agree, you know that. He's way over work now, a lot of big responsibilities, not just day-to-day perk tests and a lot of other things. He's got a lot of important things on the plate. He's working with us. He's just too stretched out, way too stretched out.
I don't disagree, but I do want to bring your attention to the fact that the hours were increased and there was a memorialization in a certain amount of hours that were going to be dedicated to stormwater. So there were, there were
There was one that went to 28.
So, but there's still a capture of how many hours minimum are supposed to be spent to stormwater. So I think you need to find out what that number is, and if that's the number that allows to get the stormwater job done, fine. If not, then a bigger discussion needs to happen, and it sounds like some stuff in executive session needs to be come out, and I want a few guys to figure this out.
I think, well, we're going to be meeting again, so hopefully we'll get to that. I know it was increased three hours when you went from 25 to 28. I don't recall an increase in hours when we went to 35, neither here or there. It'll come out in discussion at our next meeting. Maybe at this point, it's not appropriate, appropriate to
So here's the issue as a town, and I'm just, I'm just, I want everyone to know, the stormwater responsibility is not going away, and I'm not going to become the stormwater czar, I'm just telling you the way it is. I had someone in my office today for over an hour who wanted to make sure I understood that his neighbor's addition was going to cause stormwater runoff on his property. This is on everybody's mind, because the way the weather has changed, we get rains that, you know, dump a lot of, a lot of stormwater at once, and it needs to go somewhere. So I understand what you're doing, I just want to be sure that as a town, we understand that stormwater still has a responsibility, and it's going to get worse as climate continues to change.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, Lenny, okay? In my conversation with Mike, over the weeks and months we've been talking about this, we agreed that any specific time of stormwater would not be in there. It would be as needed, and that would happen after the Board of Health things got done. And we don't expect you to be the stormwater czar, you're on the committee, and, you know, they come in to see you, I get it. So maybe we should hold off on this until such time we, but I'm going to ask Mr. Hall, Selectman Hall, to
Last two evenings, I've heard concerns about ways to improve stormwater. We've talked about Board of Health, we've talked about stormwater. We can help both. I think our focus right now is taking care of the Board of Health, and then we meet as a group and determine what we want to do with stormwater. There's some very good things. We don't have to throw the baby out with that water. Maybe a little bit of reorganization, maybe reallocation of time and monies. And have some separation, but partnership. It may be possible
Well, that would be nice if it happened. We've asked for a lot of support in the past, and you know where that's gone.
Mr. Pennily knows better than anyone his number of hours that he can work in a day. Might be, he could work for both, I don't know.
Just for the record, Michael Mullin has joined us.
Oh, good.
Good. Do you need anybody?
I just want us to be mindful that you can't push stormwater to the wayside.
Right.
This is only going to exaggerate as time goes on, and I, quite frankly, don't have the time to deal with it myself, so.
I know for me, I think we should just keep the status quo at this moment, as we're working on his job description, either whether it's through executive session or with our town administrator, but we won't, we wouldn't want to say, oh, let's do these many hours, all of a sudden find out the wrong number. So if we just kept it the same until we really figure this out.
Okay, let's make that a motion, so we have it on the record that we, for now, we'll go with the status quo until we work through the job description of both the health agent and stormwater agent. Did you make that motion?
So moved.
I second it.
Second, okay, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion from anyone? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Benato?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
And Mr. Pires also an aye. Okay, we're going to go back to 4A, because our town administrator is on the line. Good evening, Mike, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how is everybody's day? Sorry, I can't be that person.
How's it going, Mike?
Great, Mike.
So I like to think I like better than I do many bits.
You don't? No, just
Wait, I'm turning my hair right now. So do you want me to dive into the signing of the commitment for the Public Health Excellence Grant, so I can give, I can give the board an overview and talk about the coming steps that will be, what that I envision for the next few months, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay, so, so the, the state, the state DPH, I want to say, in about 2017, created a process that was led together with the Mass Association of Health Boards to call the, so it was a roadmap for commute, for public health nursing, and it's, and it is typically referred to, I believe, the Roadmap 2.0. So where the state, together with a number of partners and stakeholders, Boards of Health, well, called Department of Health, and this happened, and the genesis of it really began pre-pandemic, so, but they really, the state and together with Boards of Health saw the need and saw the challenges that have been, and that were and that are being faced by local Boards of Health in meeting the public health needs of residents. So they, the state, together with members of the legislature, they compiled a report, and they made, and they made recommendations based on that report, that the state would, beginning in about 2019 and 2020, again, pre-pandemic, where they would begin to, after make grant funding available to communities, to strengthen, augment, and supplement public health nurse services. So then, really, as we know, the COVID-19 pandemic happened, and, oh, you know, it's still to a degree happening, so, and it really, and as you know, and especially the health agent, and especially the health agent and Ms. Grassi knows, and all of us know, so the challenges that we faced through the pandemic really caught the light, the recommendations and the challenges that were brought forward by the, so by the roadmap, so it can buy, oh, you know, they really provided a practical lens of really looking at it based on the challenges that we face. So over the last two years, the state has been encouraging these type of, these type of shared services partnerships, and they made significant grant funding available to communities who have entered into these type of shared service partnerships. So, so the, the state, together with MHB, reached out to the communities of Attleboro, North Attleboro, Dayton, Berkeley, Rehoboth, and the city of Cotton. So in mid-September, you know, it recommended our part attention to the upcoming IFRF grant program that would be available, and encouraged our communities to work together to apply for a shared public health excellence grant. So we worked together throughout the fall, actually, I, together with the grants coordinator for the city of Cotton, like, we worked together to pull all the communities together, together with MHB, with MHB, we wrote the grant with the town of North Attleboro agreeing to be the fiscal agent, and we recently found out we were awarded the grant, which is a, it's a three, it's almost a $300,000 grant that will be shared by our six communities in the next year and a half. So what is really before you tonight is not, actually, a grant agreement, it's just really, so just really a commitment of approval, of the Board of Health's commitment, so in support of us moving forward in the process. So like, we're still very early on in the grant process, we, at this point, we know that we are part of a, of a group with the communities that I mentioned that have been awarded the grant. So in over the next, so over the next month and a half, so we'll be working, and I'll be back before the Board of Health, because we envision having a, having a more formal grant, 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 excuse me, grant agreement to present to the Board for its approval, so, but also to, we're going to have to enter into some type of, into municipal agreement as well, with the other communities involved in the grant, and the MHB, like, is helping, is helping to guide those efforts forward with us, but essentially, what the grant will do, like, it won't really replace, so like, it won't replace or take the place of any, oh, you know, like, so, so any, so like, any services we offer now, so like, what So like, what we offer now is really the base. So we have an obligation really to continue providing those services. So what this grant will do is it provides funding to hire addition, to hire additional epidemiology. It would allow us, it would hire, sorry, I'm sorry. So it would allow us to hire additional public health nurses and services to, over and above what we have now. So like, we would hire, through, again, the town of North Attleboro acting as a fiscal agent, we would be able to hire, like, the shared services coordinator to help really guide us forward, because we recognize, and the Department of Public Health recognizes, so that all of us are really stretched extremely thin right now. So that's why the grant also anticipates, and it was approved, so based on funding to hire coordinator to work with, especially the town of North Attleboro, involve us, so to manage the grant and provide these services that we propose. So again, this is early on, but what the grant is essentially seeking to do is really the overlaying, so on top of the services that we already offer as a town, really to help the health agent and to help public health nurses. So really focus on what they're doing, and they've been doing on a day-to-day basis. So, but also really help take the burden and the pressure off those walls. So like, with the supplemental funding for services. So again, this is just the beginning, you know. So what's before you tonight is just really a commitment letter that the Board of Health, oh, you know, supports and approves moving forward. So then as we roll out with an interministerial agreement, oh, you know, I'll be back before the board, and I'll have, I'll have more detailed updates for you as we have more information about this.
Thank you, Mike. I only have one question, I think, unless somebody else has some. This is, of course, we, you spoke to it, it doesn't replace our present public health nurse. It just augments the position. Public health nurse and epidemiology. Will there be any help geared to augment health agent or just nursing?
So no, we did, we did propose in the grant application, we wanted to, so the application of the grant funding would also augment, like, augment and supplement health agent services as well, because, as you know, in the public health sphere, so, so in the public health, in the public health sphere, so food inspection and other inspections are related, sort of those public health needs as well. So like, and this grant would envision, so providing supplemental services in those, in those areas as well as we roll out with this grant.
Okay, thanks.
This is more like, you know, to make us a region, like I've seen other towns.
Yeah.
So, depends how you feel about that.
So, yeah, like, it's really not, if I can speak to that, I mean, and I think the paperwork before you tries to be very clear, this isn't regionalization. So like, we are still maintaining in the Board of Health, so it's maintaining its autonomy. The health agent is maintaining his autonomy, working for the Board of Health, and the same with the public health nurse. So it's not, so it's, so it's not so much regionalization. We're not giving up any of our services, but there's supplemental shared services that are really overlaying, so overlaying existing-based services.
Mike, you said we ran it with six other communities?
Five other communities.
Five include, six include us?
Yes.
Do you know which ones they are, specific?
Yes, so Dayton, Berkeley, Rehoboth, the city of Cotton, the town of North Attleboro, and the city of Attleboro. So I believe that was six, right? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was five, yeah. Five, no, six.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody? Any other questions?
When you say divide, is there a specific number or dollar amount per each town by population or?
Not yet. We haven't got into if in any way, how that would be split. Oh, you know, I mean, I do imagine the distribution of, you know, resources, so to speak, Mr. Bernado, will be likely envisioned, maybe, in the interministerial agreement. But, oh, you know, I mean, I have to, so no, the answer to your question is right now, no. But I have to say, we, so all the communities are very workable. Oh, you know, I mean, obviously, there's bigger communities in there, there's smaller communities in there. And I have to say, there's no, so, I mean, I have, I have to also say, Dayton, through our efforts, through my efforts, has been really driving a lot of the conversation. So, I mean, and we're one of the smaller, oh, you know, the smaller communities involved. So, I mean, that just really speaks to the fact that, in my opinion, in my work so far, I haven't seen any, like, term for, like, territorial or resource-driven things, which, at this point, I think is extremely healthy. So, because, I mean, oh, you know, that would almost be a deal breaker for us if, in my opinion, if there were any of that.
All right, thank you.
Ladies?
I just have a question. So if we do this regionalization for a nurse, what services would they be doing that Nicole wouldn't be doing? Like, I guess I foresee a position where we wouldn't need our own nurse anymore because we're regionalized.
It's not really, it's not.
Well, not regionalized, but I'm sorry, but this.
Overlapping.
Overlapping, that we wouldn't necessarily need our own nurse.
So, I mean, one of the things, I mean, again, so this grant is only for a year and a half. So like, I mean, we, so I don't believe we should make it. So first of all, if you read what's in front of you in terms of the commitment, so like, so we specifically have to agree to the fact that, that we won't be replacing any existing services. So, so, you know, that, in my opinion, spells out specifically clear, oh, you know, that we're not going to have to, like, scale back or title or whatever, oh, you know, any of our existing work. I mean, but what the pandemic, oh, and even as I mentioned the work before that, has called attention to, so is the fact that, oh, you know, the cities and towns, and so in a community like Dayton, really had very limited public health, like, services even being offered in the first place. And just as an example, we know that to be a fact, just in the example of how we have managed, like, flu clinics in the past, just as an example. And we haven't really had any centralized type of process. So like, as we seek to really define, oh, and the Board of Health really seeks to define what type of strength in, oh, you know, public health nurse services that we have. So I think this grant, actually, in a sense, will help us, you know, help to define what we want and what type of things we value. I mean, provide us with additional resources to be able to think about that and do that in the next year and a half.
Okay. That's it? Nobody else?
Make sense?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Yes. Well, I know it's kind of been throwing a fun of us here, but I think the Town Administrator explained it thoroughly. And are you guys prepared to accept what's called the municipality statement of commitment for the North Bristol County Public Health Alliance? Is there a motion to accept and/or adopt or participate? I guess participate.
Participate?
Yeah.
So moved.
I second that.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to participate in the North Bristol County Public Health Alliance. Any further discussion?
Yeah, yes, just, it's a year and a half, correct? Just in the beginning, just a.
Yeah, yes, I believe it's a year and a half. I can confirm that, but I'm, like, 98% positive it's for a year and a half.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, that's not me.
If there's no further discussion, all's in favor, Mr. Bernado.
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pyer is also an aye, so it is passed. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everybody. Is that it for tonight?
Unless you want to hang around for the kennel thing.
No, no, I do, you just heard, I do have things happening, yeah, that I'm not sure really what is happening, so.
Either am I.
Good night.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, C and D, I'm going to ask the table, and I'm going to explain why real quick. Because I don't think we can discuss motion to table. I'm not sure about that. But these are something we adopted approximately two years ago. They were written by our department, and we adopted them. There are some changes that have been made. And in consideration of time, these are not as urgent as the other things behind this. I would ask that we table those for this, until our, the 14th, meeting of the 14th. That would be 4C and 4D. Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table items 4C and 4D until our next meeting, April?
April 14th, yeah. It's April 14th, I believe.
And I second that.
Okay.
But what, but the zoning thing, is that, that's got to get on the warrant, right, for the town meeting?
We got to talk about that, that's next.
Okay.
Okay. All right, motions made and seconded to table item 4C and D. Is there no further discussion? We'll vote. Mrs. Katavia?
I do.
I threw you off, huh?
Yeah.
I asked you first. Mr. Bernado?
Aye.
Mr. Pyer is also an aye. Thank you.
The last time I checked.
All right, we're moving on to 4E, 4E to review, discuss an act residential kennel zoning bylaw change with policies and procedures. You should have in front of you the motion to change the zoning bylaws and two other documents that were policies and procedures. Give a little history here. This was changed, the zoning was changed approximately two years ago. And at the time, we designated a residential kennel as needing a special permit. As a result of that, nobody, the cost of seeking an application and going through a hearing through a special permit process was upwards of $750 or so. And nobody came forward to get their kennel permits. That became a problem. So we created a committee, I guess you'd call it, or a workshop of five people. There was Jim Aguirre, Stacy Ferry, our animal control officer, Mike, I mean, Mark Pacico, our town clerk, Lieutenant Sean Cronin, and Bob McDonald, Chief of Police, and myself. We had three separate meetings to go through the motion and try to make it, I guess, match what we had discussed and what we were looking for in the zoning change. We were all, last meeting, I think it was just yesterday, right? Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we did arrive at agreement on the motion. Last motion we had, similar to this, and this has changed dramatically. And if you recall, we went to town meeting with it, and it failed because we did not have the regulations or policies or procedures ready. So after our discussion, we decided that not everyone should be required to get, have a hearing, rather, for their kennel permit. So, that being said, we came up with this, and I'll read it, even though I'm losing my voice, and. I'm going to do it. You want to read it?
Yeah, I'll.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just got to get to a microphone.
I'm going to read the, read the motion, right, Mr. Chairman?
Just the motion, yeah.
Okay. So, motion, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Dayton, Appendix A, Use Regulation Schedule Kennel Residential, by removing the requirement of a SP, which is a special permit, and replacing it with a Y with an asterisk. Y would mean it would be as right. The asterisk would refer to a footnote. The Board of Health, Town Clerk, and Animal Control Officer shall promulgate policies and procedures governing said process for approving a residential personal kennel as so defined in accordance with the applicable Massachusetts general laws. The footnote would read as follows. A residential kennel shall be allowed as a matter of right in a residential district on a lot size of 35,000 square feet or greater. A public hearing will be required with the Board of Health on a lot size with less than the minimum of 35,000 square feet. That would be the motion.
Thank you, Jim. There is one problem with this motion. And as we were, but I wanted to get it through here tonight, and everybody understood what that issue was, and understand that this could possibly be changed to the hearing being held by the Board of Selectmen. And the reason that is, because on page 23 of Article 29 in our general bylaws, Section 1, the hearing authority for dog kennel and domestic animal cases arising in the town of Dayton under 136A through 174E inclusive of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws shall be the Board of Selectmen. So it all depends how you interpret that. Does it mean the Board of Selectmen will hear everything to do with kennels? Or does it mean they will only hear, have hearings in regarding if there's an issue with a kennel, such as nuisance barking or bites, anything other that could go wrong by having four or more dogs on your property? I want to make note that a kennel, per se, is not always brick and mortar. No offense. The state designates a kennel when four or more dogs are present under one single owner. So I just wanted everybody to realize when we're talking kennel, we're not talking a structure. And actually, if you have four or more dogs, and you could have electric fence, if I'm correct, to maintain them on your property. So the only thing that may change, we haven't yet heard from Town Council on an answer. We have our opinions. I don't think, myself, and I believe Mr. Aguirre, don't think that this is applicable to the Board of Selectmen having a hearing. Not this motion, anyway. We would only hear regular, Jim.
The reason why I feel that way is if there's any key words in that general bylaw, that says cases. So with that said, I feel that a case is an extenuating circumstance. However, we need the Towns Council to weigh in. And thus far, he hasn't done so. So we're obviously not going to do anything until we, we find that out. I don't want to jump the gun, but depending on how this goes tonight, if Council says that the general bylaw does name the Board of Selectmen as the hearing authority, then we may want to change that bylaw as well. But that would be a discussion between the Board of. But that would be a discussion between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health.
I had a question, if I could. What, it says a minimum of four dogs, right?
Four dogs or more.
Four dogs or more, what's the, is there a max?
Not in this town, there isn't.
Okay, so. So I understand what you guys wrote down, but if, if you're saying a lot is 20,000 square feet, and twenty, and four dogs is a little much, right? So, if I have a thirty, my, my, my lot is a little over 35,000, what about if there's nine dogs? Wouldn't be the same idea, shouldn't be a hearing for everyone? Because if there's four, I can understand the number four, but again, somebody right next door to me, if they wanted to, could have, like I said, nine dogs. Wouldn't it be fair to say, anyone that's the immediate budding property would just have the right to be notified? I think it'd be fair.
So that, that came up in the workshop, and quite frankly, that's why it's before you. We, we, we're not absolute, there was a workshop to come up with a direction, and then it's up to you three to figure out what's best for this town, with the input of the taxpayer.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think with that, it's, it's more of a case by case, so if you had the right for a hearing, you were the abutter, and you went in there, and they explained it, and Stacy was like, oh, I've been on this property, this person has X amount of dogs, no issues ever, okay, but if they said, oh, new, whatever it is, there was some complaints, yeah, you're right, there's eight dogs, we're gonna make sure, hopefully there's no issues, then you can ask your questions. But to not get that opportunity, I think.
Personally, I, I felt that a residential kennel application should have a hearing, all of them, before the Board of Health, but I lost that. The majority of the people in the workshop felt it was not necessary to have a hearing on every single residential kennel application. So that's when, after discussion, at least I agreed to 35,000 square feet. And, you know, I get where you're coming from, and, you know, I, I don't know if Stacy, you talked about this with us, and how do you feel about going forward with something like that?
I just think the harder we make it for people, the more they're not gonna do it. If you, if you have specific guidelines, okay, if you're on a small lot, we need to, your abutters need to know, okay, I, I can deal with that, but I think somebody that has a normal house lot, and, okay, say if, not that I moved in, but I've been there for X amount of years, and I just finally realized, I've just been told that I need to have, I have six dogs in my house, I need to have a kennel license, which I didn't know before, for whatever reason, and now, Board of Health says, you know what, on your lot, you only can have four dogs. So then what happens? I know, I wouldn't wanna be told that I have to get rid of two of my dogs.
I don't, I don't think that would, I think it would be more, can you manage the dogs?
Well, I mean, we have had a situation in town that has X amount of dogs, that, you know, there is a neighbor that does not like those dogs, and we did sit here in front of the, with the board, and you asked him to get rid of some of his dogs. And I disagreed with that immensely, he still has his dogs, because we couldn't do that.
I think we helped, we did fences, and we did this, and we did that.
Yes, we did other things, because the dogs were getting off the property, but what I, what I'm saying is, nine times out of ten, if there's four chihuahuas living next door, you don't know there's four chihuahuas living next door. And Lieutenant Cronin did bring up a good point. I'm free to have those dogs, there's no bylaw that says I can't have those dogs, so.
But, but, but just to go back to that, so, I like that analogy of the four chihuahuas. So on a 20,000 square foot lot, four chihuahuas running in the yard, doesn't seem that bad, but they would still need a, a hearing?
They would still need a hearing, according to this.
Just a regular sized lot, ten German shepherds, no hearing. You see any kind of like?
Well, there is, but you can't discriminate against a dog breed.
But that's, but I'm saying, they're bigger, but they're bigger dogs, they're bigger dogs.
I love that.
Insurance companies do. Yeah, but you know what I'm trying to say? So you, you can make that analogy of small dogs on a small lot, bigger dogs, it doesn't matter how many you have, 'cause it, it's deceiving, 'cause you just say four or more, but you, when you hear four or more, you're just thinking four. But then, to your question, wait a minute, shouldn't it be just everyone have a hearing? 'Cause I don't think it would be, are you responsible to do this? Some people don't even show to the hearing. That's why we're here.
You know, Mass General Law governs a lot of the things do with, if you have four or more dogs, so even one dog, nuisance barking, running at large, you know, attacking people, not staying on a property. So, I don't know, it's, it's up to you guys, this is what came out of the workshop.
I think you guys did great work, I, I just look at it where. I'll give you another example, I, I used to work in Lakeville. We had a certain amount of space for horses, and it was like, one acre for one horse, two, two for two, whatever it was, I forget. And regardless of whatever happened, is, is, when you brought in a horse on your property, you, the animal inspector would go out there first. We'd have certain regulations where it come to, where you're gonna pile, pile the manure versus where your well is, just different regulations. And all the abutters, immediate abutters, were notified. A lot of times, somebody would say, I don't know if I should have a horse on the side, I don't want, I don't know if I, and then we'd say, well, they meet all the requirements, and there's never been any issues, and the board, I think nine out of ten times, said, approved, because they met all the requirements. Now, if you had, one of these came to you and said, yeah, you know what, Stacy, yeah, you know what, this property has had a lot of complaints, and now they want another, two more dogs, how are you gonna manage this? Then, then you can actually talk it out. But to just say, oh, you're exempt, and then let them have two more with complaints already in the background? I'm just talking like, in generality.
But that would be something different, I think, if I've had complaints on the property, that's something completely different.
But, but, but it doesn't say, there's, would have been no hearing at all?
If I had complaints on a, on a property, they would, we would bring it to either the board or to the selectmen if I had lots of complaints.
That's when the selectmen would have a hearing.
Right, that's when the selectmen would definitely have a hearing.
And you do have to sign off on this before they get a license, so I'm sure you're not gonna sign off if there's been problems.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just making a lot more, you're gonna hear hearings, you want these people to come in, you want to be able to talk to them. We're having problems with chickens now. Nobody's coming in, they're in neighbors' yards, and we're saying, we don't even know that they, they don't know they're supposed to get a barn permit for a chicken coop. And then we wouldn't be able to talk to neighbors, I'm trying to track down neighbors to talk to them, and say, would you please keep your chickens in your yard, 'cause they're defecating on the neighbor's deck with a year and a half old child running off the deck.
Thank you, and you're making my point, so if, if I probably had six dogs, you would wanna know if they're gonna come across.
That's right, but the thing is, a letter has been sent out well over a week ago, requesting that neighbor that has those chickens, please come in, what's the, how much is the cost on it?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars. Just let us know, it's right there, ten dollars. They're not even coming in.
It's a fighting battle, I know.
So, i- if you're going to say, okay, you have to have a hearing, you have to have that neighbor that doesn't like you, and that neighbor that definitely doesn't like your dogs, whether they're well behaved or not, they're gonna come in, and we're gonna be sitting here, everybody's gonna be arguing, again.
I think it's, it's easier for us, because I know not all people get their dog vaccinated, and, but at least we can have a way to track it through the town clerk. Chickens is different, and everything falls on her, when it comes to barn permits. So I've actually, we had to find, put it this way, in Lakeville, if somebody didn't pay their ten dollars, we'd, we'd almost issue a hundred dollar fine. And they're like, oh, what the heck? But, so, but it's, it's easier for us, because we, we get our dog's license, not everyone, but you get your dog's license, we have a way to track it. I ju, I just think, if you're gonna do it for a small lot with four dogs, and you say four or more, it should just be your immediate abutters, it doesn't even have to be across the street, maybe just the abutters. 'Cause those are the ones that's gonna get affected. You know, you already have sometimes issues between folks, and you just don't want to say, oh, you, we don't have that for you. We have it for the small lots, which kinda scratch your head like, why?
Well, I would say the, the first time, well, you get that many dogs, they're gonna bark, probably. So now we have nuisance barking, that gets addressed. They're running off the property because there's, there's no fence, so we address that, meet with the Board of Selectmen. What happens next, I, I'll share something with you, when, when I built my first house, my neighbor decided to put like five German shepherds in a little shed, about thirty feet from my house, and they barked all night. I went to the Board of Selectmen, they made them bring them in the house, eight o'clock at night, let them out at seven in the morning. So, things can be addressed, you know, through the process, but.
Wouldn't you wanna know ahead of time? You have, you're out, you just say you, you built a new pool, you're out there having fun, and all of a sudden, you're like, what is this noise? And you have to call, I understand, but you have to call, and you have to talk, and you have to call, but if you knew ahead of time, you could probably already hash it out right in the beginning. Hey, are you responsible with your dogs? Nobody's saying you can't have the dog, are you gonna be responsible? Yeah, no problem, I understand, I'm a dog lover, and this and that, and you could talk it out, you know what I mean?
That would be somebody who knew, probably, moving into the neighborhood, because let me tell you, more than likely, if you have a problem with your neighbor with their dogs, I've already heard before they even come here to get a kennel license, and you know that there's dogs if you're having a problem with them. This isn't somebody that's going out to buy a horse to bring on a property, this is somebody that has, for whatever reason, whether they're doing rescue, or whatever, have four dogs, that they thought was fine to have four dogs, because they have four dogs. And the only reason we're telling them they need to have a kennel license is because they have four or more dogs. Not because they have a kennel, it's just that, it's the way for Massachusetts to track what we ha, what they have. I don't know, I, I wanna make it, I wanna make this process as simple as possible, 'cause I know of at least five kennels in this town that have four or more, people that have four or more dogs that haven't gotten kennel licenses because of the old special permit thing. So I wanna make this as simple as possible for people to come in and get it done for compliance.
Simple as possible is no hearings at all.
That's what I advocated for, but.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so I had a lot to say at these workshops, obviously, and I'll, for the record, I am not a dog lover. I don't see why anybody needs that many dogs, but this is the United States, and you're welcome to have them. However, I agree with everything Stacy said, I understand what you're saying. Out of the workshop, we didn't wanna take that freedom away from Dightonians to have the dogs, they're protected under general laws. However, I felt strongly that in the cluster developments that we have now, which are all below 35,000 square feet, where we have houses in concentrated areas, that the probability that something may happen, or a nuisance complaint may come in, or a dog leaving a property and going to a neighbor's property, is, is much higher. And that's what triggered the hearing process for lot sizes smaller than 35,000. And we have about six subdivisions in town that, that qualify for that, including Mount Home Village, which we know is an older part of town. So that was the rationale behind it, it was sort of a balance between giving Dightonians the freedom to have their dogs, as long as they're properly vaccinated, licensed, and permitted, and also having some control over what Dighton's seen over the last eight years, which is concentrated development, where people live a lot closer together than they normally do. But this is a discussion, we're here to figure this out.
Did, you wanna add more, Barbara?
No, I'm all set with it, but I totally agree, if you have a large area, and you manage your dogs, that's fine. But a lot of times, they, people move, I know, I have a neighbor that's right on the other side of the wall now, and he was never there, and my dog barks at him, because he was never there, and nobody ever barked, and now they come in at midnight, slam the door, and my dog is like, hey, somebody's making noise down those woods. That's their job, to protect me, you know? And, but I, I just think it's a waste of this board's time, or whoever would take upon it, to be listening to people saying, he's doing this, and he's doing that, and I hear those dogs. I, I just think we don't need more of an overload. We really don't need, and I'm sure if there's a problem, Stacy will bring it forward, or the neighbors will bring it to Stacy and say, hey, listen, something's gotta be done, and then there could be a hearing. She knows most of the dogs in town where they are, most of the animals, too.
So what you're saying is, you allow a residential kennel with any number of dogs on any size lot as a matter of right, is that what you just said?
Well, I don't know why somebody would have fifty dogs.
Well, that's not the question.
I mean, as it stands right now, you can have quite a few horses on a couple acres of land, and be well legal with it.
Well?
I mean, years ago, they used to raise race dogs, and they'd have fifty, sixty, or more, and the conditions were horrible.
Just, if, if I may, just for clarification, 'cause Tom's question was kind of overreaching.
Yeah.
Do you, I just wanna get a feel for how this board thinks.
Yeah.
Do you feel that the lot size, minimal lot size for a hearing should be negated?
No, minimal, I, I've thirty, that's, that's fine.
That's what I was trying to get, get out of here.
Yeah, thirty-five, yeah, anything under that, I would definitely say, we need something.
Because I.
They are close, and especially, if they're building on these ninety houses, somebody's gonna be in your backyard there, and somebody's gonna be side, and it's really close range, and let's face it, big dogs make big noise.
How many kennels do we have in town?
About twenty.
Twenty. And how many in the waiting, you think?
Probably about five.
So twenty are permitted already?
Have been permitted, I don't know if they've all permitted this year.
And we're making all this for five?
Yeah. Well, this is for new, yes, this is for new kennels.
Five, maybe another five next year, and, yeah. Five hearings is a lot, in a year?
Well, it'd have to be before April first.
I'm just saying, just say, if we, if we had a hearing, just say, so five hearings is a lot?
'Cause they have to be, they have to be registered by April first, or then they get fined. So, you know, if somebody came in with a new kennel, and they came to you tomorrow, if this was, this was all in, in the bylaw, came tomorrow and said, I need to, you know, I've done everything I need to do, now I need to have a hearing, they're gonna be over their time. Because you wouldn't, you don't meet again until April fourteenth, so.
Well, that's the problem with the process.
Well, I, I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm just making a point, he's saying five within a year, no, they have to be done from January to March.
We'd probably waive that particular, you know, requirement at the time, but we'd have to because of the process.
Yes, the selectmen do meet more often if the selectmen are hearing them, but I'm just saying, they have to be done between January first and March thirtieth, so they can get their.
And, and before that, it was no hearing but a thousand dollars?
With a special permit, there was a hearing.
So what is?
With the zoning board.
With the zoning board.
So, what is, when you said, I'd like to make it easier, what is easier? Thousand dollars, special permit, no hearing, or a hearing?
No, there's a hearing.
Or a hearing, or just a hearing? What is, what is easier?
Well, just a hearing is easier for the smaller lots.
But, but in general, a hearing is easier than a thousand dollars, special permit, and a hearing?
Well, yes, because people aren't gonna pay the thousand dollars. Well, no, because people aren't gonna pay the thousand dollars, that's the problem, it's not so much the hearing.
We're not charging a thousand dollars anymore, we're saying, I'm, I'm saying, a hearing. Because before you had a hearing, and you had a special permit.
We have never had a hea, I've never had a hearing for a kennel.
Special permit, though.
But, that's only been two years that that's, and nobody has come to do a kennel because of the thousand dollars.
But they were gonna, but they were gonna be required to come anyways, 'cause of the special permit.
They would, nobody has, since that, bylaw has come into effect, nobody has opened a new kennel in this town.
I know, I think what's happening is we're trying to bypass, we're trying to make it so easy where you're gonna, you're gonna invite some problems, I'm just telling you. Before it was so tough, where you had no problems, and now it's gonna be too easy, you're gonna have too many problems. I think it should be somewhere in the middle, the gauge, and you say, you're still gonna have to do something, but you don't have to pay the thousand dollars. I don't stand, I don't see the problem.
This is in the middle.
What we, yeah, what we just.
I think a hearing is in the middle, but, that's my vote.
I mean, we have our opinions.
I don't wanna beat it to death, if you guys wanna take a vote, but.
Listen, I.
That's my position, because. That's my position, because I only want to bring this to the town if we get it right.
Right.
Because we, we can't keep messing with this bylaw.
Yep.
We have to, we have to figure this out. If it means it doesn't happen by this June, it doesn't happen, but we have to figure this out.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna ask for a vote here shortly. I, I just want to make it known that we're, depending on what Town Council says, we were voting with the understanding that the hearing by the Board of Health will be held by the Board of Selectmen. Okay? Got that, yes? Okay. So let's vote. Is there a motion to propose the, the most, the amended bylaw for kennel residential for a discussion at town meeting, discussion and vote?
As it's worded?
As it's worded, yes.
Yeah, I think I've stated my opinion, I'd like to see a hearing for all.
Okay. Barbara, nothing?
I think I would like to say just thirty-five and under, let it be a matter of right.
It is a matter of right.
I mean, I mean, over.
Over.
Over, not under, over.
It will be a matter of right.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I motion, I'm sorry, I motion as is stated.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, I'll step down, second of motion, to, uh, propose this and a town meeting for discussion and vote. No further discussion? We'll call a vote, uh, Mrs. Catabia?
Aye.
Miss, Mr. Fires is also an aye. Mr. Bernado?
Uh, no.
You're a no, okay. Not quite done with this one yet. Um, if you recall, our last meeting, this was written up at the time where it sa- stated the Board of Health will promulgate regulations, to adopt along with this. So we, and I understood what you said last meeting about regulations that have no teeth and so forth and so on. So we changed this to state, uh, policies and procedures, since that's basically what they are, they're more, more administrative policies and procedures than a regulation. Now, they're pr- they're being proposed this evening for discussion, because another thing we didn't find out from our Town Council is if the Town Clerk could promulgate policies and procedures. We know that we can. So I'm presenting them, these policies and procedures along with the, uh, motion that we just adopted, because when we go to town meeting, and also when the zoning board has a public hearing on this, someone will want to know what those policies and procedures are. Um, you both were sent the policies and procedures previously, Roz, sent them out, I believe?
Um, the Town Clerk actually sent them out.
Excuse me?
The Town Clerk actually sent them out.
No, to Kevin and to...
Yeah.
And Barbara.
Mm-hmm.
You sent them out, right?
I think it was, somebody sent the Town Clerk, maybe.
The only changes to what was sent to you are those changes in red. So I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to read what was sent to you. I'm hoping you did.
Would you...
I'll give you a minute to read them if you haven't read them yet. This also, these policies and procedures were also agreed upon by the five or six member workshop members that I mentioned earlier. Again, we spent probably three meetings on this, I think we spent about seven hours, if I'm, no, I'm sorry, five hours probably. We had a couple of two-hour sessions and probably six hours.
Some of us spent time outside the workshop looking at them, so...
Yeah, yeah. So, we, we, we spent a considerable amount of time. It's, uh, procedures set forth that gives timelines on non-compliance, so...
I have a question on number seven. It says, if after two unsuccessful inspection attempts by the Animal Control Officer in a two-week period, non-issuance of the kennel license, so you'll revoke it?
Well, they don't have one yet.
Oh, so that's when they don't have it. What about if they...
This is when they're renewing. So if they haven't renewed as of April first...
So you won't just renew it, okay.
I will get a letter within ten days on those people that haven't. And either I call them or knock on their door, and let them know that they need to have, um, need to be inspected. If I call them and they don't let, you know, they don't make attempts to let me in to inspect, then it will be non-issuance of the license, and then the fines can start being levied.
What's the, what's the fine?
It's fifty dollars.
They define it in general laws already.
And do they have a right to a hearing?
For...
Well, when you, when you issue a fine, you check the box.
Yes.
I want a hearing. How does that work? To, to this town, to this police station, at, I mean, courthouse, or is it here?
Good question, I would assume...
It's a non-criminal disposition?
Yeah, so you get a both.
So you follow the procedure, right?
Yeah, you could do both, you could go courthouse, or you could say, in writing, within seven days. You have to put that on your notice, within seven days. They have to respond back to you, uh, the board, wherever the board is, and they have a right to a hearing.
Right.
Due process, everybody has a right to due process.
These are more for use for the Town Clerk, and in the same situ- I don't know if I might be repeating myself here. I believe I am. Town Clerk, we don't know if he can promulgate policies and procedures, so... Uh, we're presenting them here because we can. I don't think so either.
Yeah, I, I've done a little research into this, I don't believe the court can. The clerk is just a licensing authority. Any process to get to that point to be licensed would be outside of his or her jurisdiction.
We're gonna push Mr. Costa to respond.
Oh, he's overloaded. So is there any other questions on these two documents, policies and procedures? Again, bear in mind, where it talks about the hearing with the Board of Health, that could be changed to the Board of Selectmen, as we discuss this. So is there a, any further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt and put forward these policies and procedures? The Town of Dighton policies and procedures for new residential kennels, and Town of Dighton administrative procedures for kennel license renewal. Is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
I can't, because the first one talks about thirty-five thousand square feet, so...
Okay. I'll step down, a second of motion. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, Mr. Bernado?
No.
Mrs. Catabia?
Aye.
Mr. Fires is also an aye, the motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks for all your hard work, everyone.
Especially you, Tom.
You guys worked hard on it, just, uh, just a discussion.
Well, that's it. Okay, well, Board of Health member job description and posting. This is the same job description that we approved before, but this time we took out the need to, uh, because it's so close, getting close to election time by the time this gets done, we took out the need to reapply, uh, at the end of a term. And we also added the minimum housing standards, down in minimum qualifications. If we recall, that was what was posted without that in it, so... Give you a moment to check it out, any questions, please raise them. Again, that's what was posted before.
Yeah.
When we hired Mrs. Catabia, uh, except for a couple of minor changes of having to reapply and adding minimum housing standards to the, uh, minimum qualifications. Any questions?
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay. You all, did you read through Barbara?
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Okay, um, seeing there's no questions, let's vote. All in favor of, uh, adopting that amended job description? Uh, say aye, Mr. Bernado?
Aye.
Mrs. Catabia?
Aye.
Mr. Fires also an aye. Okay, we'll, uh, use that going forward as our template for job vacancies. Agent Kelly, would you take G, please, four G, to review, discuss an act? Oh, I'm sorry, I got you on the wrong one. Four G, review, discuss an act, schedule public hearing for proposed septic regulations.
Uh, sure, actually, both G and H, uh, go together. We will plan on the April meeting for having both of those. So we will, we've got the newspaper legal ad done, it'll be ran up by Kevin, and he's said everything's okay, so we can get that run in the paper. We'll be posting it with the Town Clerk, um, so if anybody comes in to see it, they can see it there. We'll have it on our website as a draft, and we'll also have it in the office. But that, they'll both be on to the April meeting.
Email all the, um, installers and...
For the septic regulations, that will be, um, the installers and engineers that work in town regularly. The body art regulations, we have one body art establishment in town, we're sending it to them, so...
Okay, so we're gonna do both on the fourteenth?
Now, how did you work it out? You have, which one's first?
It is, six o'clock is the body art, and six fifteen is the, um, regulations for, uh, septic.
Yeah, I was, I hadn't mentioned, maybe drag it out, or maybe even, but you guys will put it at that time?
I can change it, it's not in the paper yet, so this is what we've got.
Yeah, just to give enough discussion, in case it goes longer than, I don't want to give people fifteen minutes to talk.
Yeah, two and one, I would agree, two in one evening is probably too much. Are you talking about extending the timeframe?
Yeah, so if the body art is probably gonna have one establer, most likely, but give them a more than fifteen minutes to speak, like, it's, it seems like, but we don't have to start exactly at six fifteen with the other one, but as long as we, I would just say six and six thirty at least.
If they get done early, we can do other business while they're...
Yeah, so if we say six and six thirty, we can at least close out that hearing, the board, the board would discuss and vote. We could open up the hearing, the pub, regular public health meeting, take a few things, close it again, and...
Any appetite for signing?
Or even recess for half, uh, ten minutes?
Oh, we'll do business.
We can recess for...
Any appetite for signing at five?
That's kind of tough for a public hearing, because people get out of work. We could start the hea- we could start the meeting at five.
Cable can't be here before six.
Unless you report it on that, you guys can report that.
We could probably do the Board of Health meeting at five, but then public hearing's six and six thirty.
You can get here by five, you think? Yeah, I think some of these are gonna go a little bit longer than we anticipate. And, and both of them in one evening, you know, it's, uh...
Well, the body art establishment, when they opened, they were told what we were gonna be using for draft regulations, so they're aware of them all, so I don't expect it to be a long discussion for them, but that's just my expectation. But then, again, there's only one in town, nobody else has approached us about being one or opening one, so I, I don't expect it to be, to do, especially if you give them the regulations in advance.
Barbara, what do you think?
No, I ha- I don't see why it should go any longer. If it's only one, and they've talked to you before, you guys have had correspondence.
Yeah, we've done an inspection now, so...
The septic regulations will be a bit longer, we are inviting installers and engineers to this one. So, um, I'm sure there'll be plenty of discussion.
And you have enough time, you have the two weeks, if you sent it out?
Yes, it's a month from now to the meeting, so, yeah.
Just make sure.
Yep.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me personally, it'll, I, it would, we take what, what it takes to get through the meeting, so...
We can actually mention, if we were, if we ran a little longer, we could say, if you guys are all here for the meeting, we're gonna finish up, uh, we will stop.
Well, do you want to start at five?
Well, the, the, I would say the hearings have to start at whatever time you agree on. If you wanted to start the regular Board of Health meeting at five. Or you want to just think?
Yeah, that's fine with me, early at the...
You go with five?
I don't know if we're gonna be now for Board Health stuff, I don't know what else we're gonna have on the agenda. Five would be too much time.
Uh, true.
Yeah, we're gonna make it five thirty, you know, so...
Do we have to make the decision tonight about the time to start?
No.
Just the time of public hearings should be established.
Well, let's start the public hearings at six, and then we'll figure it out there.
The septic regs, six for body art, six thirty for the septic regs?
And we'll decide if we want to start our regular meeting.
All right, six fifteen, that's fine, you know what?
Six and six fifteen, or six fifteen?
Six and six fifteen.
Okay, we'll just, we'll keep it the way it is, sorry.
Okay.
I just want to give people enough time, but if it's gonna be, you think it's gonna be brief, that's fine. Then we can just keep the meeting at six then.
Is there a night to put it in the newspaper that you prefer?
No, you just gotta call them and say what time, when's the earliest they can put it in, it's gotta be consecutive weeks.
Right, and it just has to be a minimum number of days in advance, too. If it's ten, you can go fourteen if you want.
So am I supposed to be putting these as one? We've discussed this...
You could, you could say, the, the...
Say, one.
Board of Health is gonna have, um, whatever we vote, you know?
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Public hearings for this and this, a copy of the full proposed regulations can be, be made available, and you give them a way to get to it.
So it wouldn't be the complete wording for one and then the complete wording for the next one together? It's gonna be...
Yeah, you could, you could, each one, for each, yeah. I will look at exactly what you have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to make sure it's official.
All right.
Moving on. Four I. Four, aye, update capital L request. We talked about this last time, our last meeting, but since that last meeting, another form was sent out, which confused me. Since we've already applied, and I'm glad Selectman Holt's here, maybe he can help us along with this, or Jim, you might know have the answer. Do we have to reapply with that one form? Or is that for future projects?
Future projects.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Within a five-year period.
Okay. So, 'cause we've already submitted our forms, and that was for future project, okay. Thank you very much. Four J, update recommendation to Board of Selectmen regarding Pharma Solid Waste Committee. Period. We are meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the twenty-third of March, six fifteen, do a brief presentation of the history, actually, of solid waste disposal in the town of Dayton, where we came from and where we're going, and what the situation is today. As far as things being banned from the system. It's a far cry from what we did. I want to mention Peter Borges at this time, 'cause he's been with the town for forty-five years, and June, just to let people know, when we first began this back then, with the curbside pickup, they picked up everything. So it didn't matter what condition it was in, that's before the landfill was capped, that was back in nineteen seventy-seven. So he's been here a long time, we've come a long way with things, but if you're interested in seeing what we're gonna talk about, there's a little more to the story than that, but we will be giving a presentation at that meeting. And right after that, we'll be doing our budget, so.
I can just add two quick things, I'm gonna do it under correspondence, but makes sense here. So we were notified that the recycling, NER, is going up like thirty dollars a ton for the stuff that they take, which is a significant increase. And because of the price of fuel has gone up, the diesel fuel, we are now being hit with a fuel surcharge as part of the contractor for just their trucking. So everything's gone, but again, that's why we want a solid waste committee, so.
Yeah, it is, I'm sure there's gonna be escalation clauses like Borges has in his, and what's going on, so. Yeah, I don't know where it's going, just for to put it out there, I paid four fifty a gallon today for oil, so, home heating oil, and it's, you know, it's, I don't know where it's going in now, but we'll see. Okay, this is one I wanted you to take.
Well, we're only opening March twenty-third, that meeting for Selectmen, we're also honored to discuss on Monday.
Yes.
They're both gonna be the same night, so it's very convenient for us. Barbara, did you want to take the next one?
Okay. Will you discuss an act resident handbook of what to expect when installing, repairing, or upgrading a septic system?
So this was that, what, two, three-page handbook, that was just to guide, because all homeowners seem to have the same questions, and we go through the same process. So we put together a handbook and, or talked about it last meeting, but it was tabled. I don't think anybody had any more thoughts to add to it, or, I mean, I, it's not a regulation, it's not a bylaw, it's just something we're gonna post on our website, it's a guide, so you can change at any point in time, so. I don't, I forget why it was tabled, but if there was, if any other thoughts or anything that you want to add to it.
Well, I, I just think it kind of mirrors what some of the DPH guidelines are, and it's an easy-to-understand little reference material. I see some town, towns have a similar thing on their website. Just, you know, very brief, saying what to expect for the most part, so.
I think it looks good, just keep using the word recommend, it's recommended, recommended. I never say you must, and you should, shall, just because somebody says, oh, I didn't know, you said I was supposed to be doing this.
So, you get to read it, yes?
Yeah, I did read it.
Okay, if we're all in agreement that it's okay, let's, let's get a motion to agree to the posting of it on our website and other, and as, as handouts to anybody that may come in, so. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I seconded.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, Mrs. Catabia? Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
I'm sorry, my mind was looking at something else.
I'm also an aye, Mr. Fires.
And if anybody ever wants anything added to it, just say a word, and we can change that day, so.
Okay, moving on to number five, inspectors' reports. Health agent?
All right, first off, we went to a training yesterday. Mrs. Catabia, Mr. Ayana, myself, went to Mansfield for a training. And we learned some stuff, but we get some credits for our SESI. Does anything else you want to bring anybody's attention about anything from the meet from yesterday?
You liked the last present.
The cowboy hat, yeah. He did have some good jokes, though. We wait a long time, it was quite a long day.
Was the lunch good, at least?
The cheesecake was fantastic.
Missed the cheesecake.
It was really good, yeah, it was really good. Some of the presenters were long-winded, and it was kind of a repeat of we, what we really know. The only thing I wish that they had taken more time with was the drip irrigation, which was kind of new to me. But other than that.
It was a good day.
It was a good day.
So that was five credits towards the, the CUs, towards the tent we need, so it works out well. We got a memorandum from Mass Association of Health Boards that local board of health members and staff have shared correspondence demanding the lifting of COVID-19 mandates and identifying a number of violations of local, state, federal, and international law, claiming the individual liable unless they acquiesce to the demands. Many of these are entitled notice of violation. MHB is letting us know that they're intimidating emails, and that you are not to respond to them in many ways, shape, or form. And they go on for six pages of giving you the court cases and everything, where the facts, and these allegations are false, but they basically say to not engage, so. If anyone wants to read the six pages, I can send it out to you, but it's kind of what we already knew. This one, maybe for Nicole. The healing community study that we're part of for New Bedford, the opioids. You and I have gone to a couple meetings for it.
I remember that.
It goes on and on about the reaching out to community members in a bunch of towns, including Dayton. And they want us to be involved in the study. They've allocated money to do this, for funding of strategies that expand access to medications for treatments of opioid use disorder, opioid overdose education, and naloxone distribution, and safe prescribing and dispensing. Basically, this is beyond my abilities, and I think this might be something that we might want to, now that she's kind of passed that.
I think I was part of that group in Lakeville, there's a certain amount of hours you have to meet, if that's the same group. It's like a.
Yeah, they meet like quarterly or monthly or something, down in New Bedford.
So you have to, you have to meet those to be in that, to be in that program, to get funding.
Yeah, it says they can expect to, both, the coalition member can expect to spend one to five hours per month on coalition activities, depending on their level of engagement with the coalition.
You could actually send out different representatives, when I couldn't make it, we sent somebody from the police department, and we couldn't, when I, he couldn't make it, we sent the representative from the fire department.
So, as I, some of this stuff, I, I struggle to pronounce the words, so, but I think it might be more in line for our nurses to be doing this, but, and I'm just going with her now, she hasn't heard this in advance, so.
You might put it on the meeting and look at it.
Put it on, grateful, I can circulate the document.
Okay.
Ken, how did you find the training?
They, they came to us the same thing, because it was New Bedford, the collaboration was Freetown, Lakeville, New Bedford, and, I don't know, Kuschnet, we all met. They had different programs, we had come up with a, something with a kiosk, or whatever it was, it was those scan codes, where people come up to a billboard, scan things, to get information for help for opioids and family members. They actually had programs where, we were looking to get programs where if a, somebody OD'd, who goes and talks to the family at the hospital? Sometimes it's like, oh, I know, I'm sorry, your son just OD'd, and then they leave. Getting counseling for that family member, because they really needed at that time. So we were looking at stuff like that, that was part of the programs, but I ended up resigning, moving on to a different position, so. So I don't know what ever happened to that thing, but it's a good program, you have to commit the time.
Yeah, Tom, I went to a couple meetings, and they were very educational, all that, it's just, it was a time thing, it just, then COVID hit, and that kind of broke the chains, so.
I was a member of the Taunton Coalition, or the town was actually, some years ago, when I was still a member of the Board of Selectmen. Now, I don't know if Taunton still runs their coalition or not. You don't know?
I was on it too, and I was teaching.
Oh, were you? And after I left the Board of Selectmen, nobody, nobody attended anymore, so I don't know what sense this happened at, and whether, can you, would you mind finding out if Taunton still has a coalition?
Oh, I will.
Would you? Thank you.
There are a couple people, I still stand.
I think we're we're a better fit in the Taunton Coalition, I think, instead of the New Bedford Coalition.
Yes, definitely.
So.
Well, the New Bedford Coalition's got like a million-dollar grant to do a regional study for a bigger area, and that's why we're driving to this healing communities thing, it's a federal grant that they got, so. Next thing is Mass DEP was nice enough to implement new regulations at the Board of Health House to enact three fourteen CMR sixteen point zero zero notification requirements to promote public awareness of sewage pollution. So the city of Taunton Sewer Treatment Plant has combined sewer overflows, which means some of their sewer system takes stormwater. So in a big rain event, they may be discharging sewage to the Taunton River. If this happens, Taunton's now required to notify everybody downstream, which would be awesome. We then have to use Code Red to alert everybody in town, that you can't touch the water in the Taunton River for forty-eight hours. We have to post signs at any act, public access point on the river, and use our electronic message boards or whatever to get the word out. So it just came out, it goes into effect like in July, and they told us about it last week, so. So we're gonna have to buy some signs and put those up that say that the river has combined sewer overflows, and this is all a bunch of language, and they say it just came out, so.
It's too bad, because the Taunton River is finally clean and not polluted, like it was back in the day, so. Anyway. Anything else?
Are they ever gonna do some stormwater management then, in the future? I know Fall River did a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, so what the city of Taunton is doing, it's called I-I reduction, we are infiltration. Basically, any stormwaters or drains that's getting into the pipes, they have to identify it and close it off, and they're working towards it. Anytime anybody files for a large sewer connection, they have to give money to help them close off stuff in other places, so they're, they're getting there. The city of Rockton's able to eliminate all of theirs, Taunton's been working on theirs, but it's not there yet. The only other thing I got is, we did have, somebody reached out to us about having sunless spray tanning, and the question was whether or not there were regulations for that, and Kevin did a lot of research on it, I know, and, if you want to fill in on.
Yeah, from my research, I couldn't find anything, and.
Did Cheryl Sabara ever call you? I called MHB and requested assistance.
Yeah, if we could just try one more time with community sanitation, just ask them, but from, from reading the regulations, it talks about ultraviolet and radiation.
Yep, I found all the same stuff.
But, so you would, you can only follow what, what the regulations say, so you couldn't say, oh, this is sunless pro, sunless product, it's a lotion, I think you get those lotions anywhere. There's really nothing.
My opinion was they don't need a business permit.
Yeah, she actually said, this individual said she was gonna look at a business permit.
Well, she would need that from the building part.
Well, she said that was, she was gonna do that, but then I, I said, right now, unless we hear something different, I cannot find any information regarding sunless tanning spray. She said it's organic, she gave me some specs on it. Really nothing with that, but maybe just check with community sanitation? But Cheryl didn't say anything, or?
Never got back to us.
Right, that's all I got.
Okay, Mr. Agia?
I just have one request of the board. We know that there's gonna be a change in the board in the next coming months, I believe. You may.
But June is my.
So I'm asking the board to either pick someone or multiple of you to get minimum housing training, because in the absence of Mr. Bernato, I'm the only other one that has any background in minimum housing. And we do have some multifamilies in town, and it do, does come up on occasion. So I would just ask that we have someone else trained in minimum housing standards, so that if something comes up, I'm not the lead, but I can be the supporter.
So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can find somebody. We have a diverse group now, and I hope it stays that way, so. But the minimum housing, of course, can be found in the CMR, so it's, there is formal training.
The Public Health Institute has some, but then there's, there's a, there's a regular training through maybe it's MHOA, but there's a regular training where you actually go do five inspections with an inspector, and then write a report, it's a one-day training, five inspectors, five inspections, and you read all your reports, and you submit that, you get that certification. But if you go on Public Health Institute, there's that, that online training, which the next person should definitely do.
So this has been on my performance evaluation goals the last couple years, to get, to do the housing training. Obviously, we've been a little sidetracked from that, but it's been on my list, I haven't.
Been a little busy.
It's either MHA or MHOA, they have it.
Yeah, we know where they are, we've.
No, for the one I'm talking about, you do the, you do the five inspections.
Oh, okay.
You shadow somebody, then you do the lead, and then you write the reports, and then you get your certificate.
I think it would be good if some, hopefully, we don't know who the candidates are gonna be, but if at least one of the board members has some experience with minimum housing too, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
That was it, Jim?
Yes.
Any public input, from anyone? Okay, moving on, correspondence?
I pretty much covered it on the.
Approval of minutes, February tenth. Everybody get to read them? Yes?
Yes.
Those are the same ones, yeah.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
So moved?
No, second.
Oh, I know that, teasing you.
Speak up.
I second that.
There's a.
You guys are all kicking on me.
I'm not saying nothing, you're doing great.
Yeah, I know what you're doing over there.
Minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, Mrs. Catabia?
Aye.
Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
They are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to adjourn. All is in favor, Mrs. Catabia?
Aye.
Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
Mr. Fires is also an aye. Good evening, everyone, thank you for.